If you'll start the camera, if everybody will please rise, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. I'd like to thank Sidney Casey, who's filming for us tonight. Appreciate her time here. Also, as we go through our board tonight, make sure we keep our mission and our vision in our minds as we look to make all of the decisions. So, we'll start then with the newly reorganized district. And you should have that up in front of you there, that agenda. We just need a motion then to approve, call to order, I guess. Do we need to do a roll call on that since newly? Are we good? Go ahead, I guess.
Here.
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 All righty. Then we go ahead and approve the agenda for the newly reorganized.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Tom, do we have a second? All right, thanks, Jay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. No hearing of delegates. Well, I guess that was before that, sorry. Consent items. We've got some minutes from the previous newly reorganized.
Correct.
Yes.
That would be it.
That would be it. If there isn't any questions, then we just need a motion to approve the consent items.
Make a motion to approve the consent items.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Lanny. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent items are approved. We'll go into new business. We're going to start by looking to approve the AEA purchase agreement.
Yeah, and just a reminder, you know, as we get to the time of the year where we're approving stuff for next year, whether it's purchasing agreements, contracts, you know, that all falls under the newly organized district. So, we have a few more items this month than last month, and that will continue probably to grow until June will be our last month to have the two board meetings, and then our July meeting will be our first of just the reorganized meeting. Our first new business is the AEA purchasing agreement, which is an annual agreement that we have every year that allows us to purchase different products like food and supplies, mostly food, from the AEA purchasing vendor list. Significant financial savings that we receive by having this and the district being part of this group. So, I would recommend the AEA purchasing agreement for 2023-24.
So moved. Thanks, Jay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea. We have a motion and a second then. Any further discussion on the purchasing agreements? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Purchase agreements are approved. Looking to approve a cooperative student teaching agreement with you and I in Morningside.
Another annual agreement that we have with a number of institutions, you and I and Morningside are on the agenda for tonight. What these do, this agreement simply allows for them to place students in the Algonquin Community School District to allow their students to provide instruction for our kids, our students. I think it's a great opportunity for us to do that, and we've been lucky to have some wonderful student teachers that have worked with our kids from both you and I and Morningside, as well as a few others that will have at other meetings. So, I would recommend the approval of both you and I and the Morningside Cooperative Student Teaching Agreements.
Is there a certain number we shoot for every year, Joe, or does it kind of vary?
It does vary. Once these agreements are in place, they'll start to talk to the building principals about possible needs they have, you know, like maybe a second grade or high school English or whatever that may be, and then, you know, they'll make decisions on putting those in place. We typically have, you know, a couple a semester, I would say.
Do I have a conflict of interest since my niece is coming from you and I to student teacher next year, possibly?
I don't think so.
It's not monetary.
Just wanted to check.
Well, it's gonna be good to have her, then.
She'll be back. She's excited.
I make a motion to approve the contract.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Thanks, Tom. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Set a hearing date for, I'm sure, the budget in April.
Yeah, we need to set the April board meeting, which is April 10th at 7:00 PM, as the public hearing for the certified budget for FY '24. Put that in the new meeting agenda because we're certifying next month the budget for the district for next year. This one took a little thought for us to figure out where it goes, but that has to be a new district item. So, we need to set that public hearing time at April 10th at 7:00 PM.
And in your report tonight, we're going to kind of talk a little bit about the.
Tonight, I will go through that process with you guys, so you'll get that information. That'll give you, you know, the next month to, you know, if there's different ideas or changes we need to make to the budget, we can do that before we certify in April.
All right. Needed then a motion to set the hearing date and time for our next board meeting, April 10th, 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Thanks, Jay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Todd, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Any opposed? All right, motion carries for the hearing date, set time and date. All right, we've got local group risk pool for natural gas.
Yep, the risk pool program, you know, what that does is it stabilizes our natural gas prices and other public entities. The total premium is set based upon the district enrolled meters, which we have one at each building. The premium for the enrolled meters is for the 2023-2024 school year, $130,000. That's $22,000 higher than last year, but that is what has happened with the price of natural gas in that time. This has been something that's been very good for us. I think it has been something that has created a savings. So, I would recommend that we once again pay the risk pool premium out of the management fund as we have the last three years.
So, that's just the premium for the, not the actual gas expenses, or am I?
It's, no, it's.
It's the actual gas expenses?
It is.
Okay.
Yep. Considered premium because it's, you know, like an insurance that you're really buying at that.
At that level, so it doesn't go up?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Reduces fluctuation?
Yes, yep, stabilizes it for us.
It helps us a little bit in the general fund then to be able to.
It does, because we.
Use it out of management this way.
Being part of the risk pool is what allows us to do that.
Okay. So, all right, we need a motion then to approve the local risk pool for natural gas.
So moved.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Going into the last item is personnel and approved contracts.
Yep, we have two contracts for next year. Nick Lebo, high school instrumental music, and Taylor Creeps, elementary teacher at Lucia Wallace. We're excited about both of these two. Nick's coming back to us, and Taylor will be a new teacher out of you and I.
Need a motion then?
Third or fourth. Don't know for sure yet until we finish our hiring there, but we got both open. Putting our people in place where it fits best for them.
Question. All right. Need a motion then for approval of contracts?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Lanny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Contracts are approved. All right. Do we need to close this meeting? All right, we need a motion then for adjournment of the newly reorganized Algonquin district.
So moved.
Thanks, Jay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Todd. We are closed then. We'll roll into our next meeting. Want to thank Lanny for being here tonight. I know it's a short time, but we appreciate your time being here. Don't say don't. Please stick around. Gloria will make her way back up. All right. All right, as we look to approve the agenda for the Algonquin Community School District, there'll be just a slight change. We're going to have the administrative report go ahead of the superintendent's report since we have a concert here tonight. So, with that stated, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second? Thanks, Gloria. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. We do not have any hearings of delegates or communications to the board. We'll move into consent items, which you should have received in the packet earlier on Friday. Might even got it earlier than Friday this week. So, and you do have an updated, the invoice is in front of you, I believe. Two. A few extra ones. Any comments about or anything on the consent items or the?
All financials there, their routine for this month. Things look good. Our trends are the same as they have been. Our revenues still exceed our surpluses as we anticipate that they will through the year. Some of our funds, including the side, the insurance fund, continue to grow, look really good. We're strong in both our Save and PEPL. I think there's a note in there that management, once we receive our April tax payment, that'll be back in the positive, but that's just what it reflects for this month.
Just one, I just glanced through these and I see one for like Comfort Inn and Suites, and it says meal reimbursement.
So, like a group.
Is that just a?
I don't like the way the system is still.
Okay, okay.
People put in that stuff, and then you don't catch every single one that they put the, like, broad.
The code or whatever?
You gotta, you gotta edit every single one.
I just, it's like.
I missed that one, I haven't done.
Yeah, well, no big deal. I just, it just was. That's what I assumed, but I just, so.
State wrestling?
Comfort Inn, yes. We had, was it girls or boys? I forget. They have girls cheerleading, boys. Cheerleading for boys, cheerleading for girls. The boys wrestlers, the girls wrestlers. And then you have state basketball, which we don't have yet, but yeah, a lot of hotels lately. Donnell and I have confidence. Somebody else tomorrow. We need our own travel agent.
Yeah, there you go. All right, any other questions about the consent items? Hearing none. We need a motion then to approve consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
Thanks, Todd. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Jay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent items approved. All right, we're going to move then to the administrative report, and we have a report on our ELL program.
Yeah, tonight we have Morgan Keeker and Abby Kissinger, who are here. They are English language learners instructors. Morgan serves our middle school and high school, Abby in our elementary. Our middle areas, you know, we're, that's an area of need, and these gals will talk about their programs, the supports they provide for kids.
Good afternoon. I am Morgan. So, as Joe had said, I work with our middle school and high school ESL kids. Okay, so here are our numbers over the past three years. We wanted to make sure that you guys could see how it's changing. So, the high school has pretty much stayed the same, but the middle school students, we've had an increase in numbers and the elementary students. What we've been seeing is that we have, we have a lot of students that are staying in the district, but then we're also getting a lot of newcomers.
And as you can see from elementary, I've had up to 30 move in and out. I would say it stays consistently about 26, 27 active EL kids. So, from two years ago, it's almost doubled, and it's been great. I would say they, they do stay, and, but there are more newcomers every couple of months, and it's fun to see them come and great families and kids to work with, so. Okay, our roles as EL teachers vary a little bit between high school, middle school, and elementary. One of our main roles is to collaborate and support the general education teachers, and some ways we do that is provide them with different strategies, like graphic organizers, using lots of images, and vocabulary notebooks. We do some English notebooks with students and more with elementary students. I set up students with Imagine Learning Program, so they can do that in the classroom when they might not be able to do some of the other stuff that they're working on. And then I also have been helping prepare main idea vocabulary for our CKLA units that they've been working on. We also, our main job, obviously, would be to teach English as a second language during specific times. Morgan will have specific class times that she has. I do pull out, so I will take small groups of students and just take them out for about half an hour at a time to work on English. And the lessons are focused on four language domains, which are reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And through ALBA 21 testing, which is the English Language Proficiency Assessment that they take every year, that's how we kind of get their levels of where they are with their English language proficiency, and then we can kind of just form their lessons around where they're at. And then also, a big one is to be the main contact with parents. I was just talking with one about 10 minutes ago. So, yeah, those are our main roles.
We determine placement based on two types of tests. So, we have a screener test that we give to newcomer students, and then we also have a summative test, and that's what we're giving right now during February and March. And those are four tests for each student that we have that's an ESL student in our district. And so, we give them a test on reading, one on writing, one on listening, and one on speaking. Those help us know if they are beginning, early, intermediate, intermediate, early, advanced, or advanced in the program. Once our students get fours or fives on all portions of the test, then they are just monitored for two years and they're tested out of ESL. So, this helps determine what level our students are.
How many kids do we have like that, that were once, you know, you won't have the exact number, but I think people don't realize, we have a number of students who came to us as English language learners who are not meeting with you guys every day, right?
Yeah.
Right.
I have six monitors, like, more in the upper elementary, but yeah, they, and then I've had some that have already done the two-year monitor, and so I don't have to either deal with them at all anymore, which is too bad because I always have to see them go, but.
What we have noticed too is as the, as they age, the test gets harder. And so, we are seeing more students test out at younger ages, like middle school and elementary, because the test does get harder.
There's usually a gap between, what, fourth and fifth grade where the test change is going to get harder, so. All right, so some family connections that we do. I said earlier, we are in constant contact with a lot of them. I use Remind because it will translate for them and vice versa, and I also just text them as well, so. I also have done, set up some appointments for students. They don't know where to contact, you know, for eye appointments or doctor's appointments, and I've actually gone to some of those with them to help translate what I can. So, those are a few of the things that we've done.
As well as that, I've helped students make a lot of appointments for physicals to get involved in our extracurricular activities, helped with other life skills such as paying bills, applying for jobs, and driver's training. And then we support families as they transition into the district and the community, and I feel like we try and welcome them the best we can and provide those supports in the community and in the school for them.
I think these are some tremendous things these guys do that I don't know. This is in the job description, but it's what they actually do do. And we've also been part of a community group that started recently that's been put in place really to do some of these things that these guys do for our kids, to provide the support that the family needs, and I think that's a really powerful group in our community. That's awesome that it started to help out some different members.
What's the name of that group, Joe?
Latino outreach group.
Yeah, Latino outreach is what they call it, and really it's just some people in the community who know the supports that are needed and know that some of our community members are struggling to get it. We were asked to be a part of it, and these guys are great resources on that, and we need more supports too for our kids as well, so it's been a good group that we've been able to be a part of.
Are there any questions for us?
How many different languages do we have in schools?
Currently, we have students, just Spanish. We have some student, a lot of students from Cuba. I just got a student from Nicaragua, so some of the dialects are different. Honduras.
Guatemala.
Guatemala. Puerto Rico.
Primarily Spanish based.
Yeah. Yep, so far, yep.
I think we've had one four years ago, maybe, that was from India. Does that sound right? I'm not sure.
Okay.
They were, they were tested out by the time I got there, so, yeah.
We always get excited when we see another country. It's fun.
So, do they pretty much all speak a little bit of English when you get them or not at all?
It's really all just different. Some of them have English as a second language, just very basic in their country. So, they come to us with a little bit of English. I've had some that don't speak any English at all, and then some that are just coming from different districts and have been in the United States for a while, so they speak some English pretty good.
I would say more is, what I had in elementary is zero English, so lately this year than the last couple of years.
Recently, we have got children who their first schooling in the United States has been with us.
Yep.
So, those students typically don't have much English.
Right.
How much utilization of technology are you guys using currently right now, or is it a big help, or?
We bought headphones, actually, that they're Timekettle headphones, and so they, the person that's speaking with us in a different language, they can have a headphone, and we can have a headphone, and we can translate that way. That makes it more personable for us. We personally didn't like just using a cellphone to translate, so that's helped with a lot of conversations.
Those are great.
Rosetta Stone, we use Rosetta Stone.
We have a set of the Timekettle headphones in our office that Donnell will use as the family comes in, and it works really well.
Right, it does, yes, it does.
Are those expensive?
$2.50?
Yeah, terribly then.
No, not for what they do.
Yeah, worth it, for sure.
I don't know, how many sets do we have now?
Four, five.
Thank you.
How do they assimilate beyond just the language? Are they making friends? Are they, are they able to really, are we embracing that?
Better than others. Some of them, it's a huge culture shock, and I think that's what we're trying to get better at, is like making it more welcoming, and that's why we're trying to get involved with the community. Yeah, I mean, just like any student, some adjust better than others. But the ones that haven't adjusted well, we've made sure that we've been supportive, extra supportive of them, and work with their parents and stuff to be able to help them eventually get used to the culture.
And sometimes now, we can kind of hook them up with maybe another Spanish-speaking student.
Yes, that's what I was going to say. Elementary, we try to hook them up with another student from Cuba, and when they find out they're from the same country, they think it's awesome.
Yeah.
So, elementary is different. They're a little more resilient, and those students are more flexible and maybe a little more welcoming than middle school, but they seem to adjust pretty well, I think.
We do have some, a lot of our students too, that they've came like our first year of teaching, and they, they're good help to the newcomers that are coming in. We'll pair them up, and even something as simple as like showing them around the school. They now have someone that's speaking in English and Spanish with them, and that's helpful. It makes it more comfortable for them.
I've went down the hall and grabbed some high school students to help us with some people in the office before, and they were awesome.
It was great.
Yeah.
They're very helpful.
And these are kids who were new to us maybe a couple of years ago.
Have we looked at any other schools that, I mean, obviously, there's been some that have come before us, right, and have been doing this for a long time, probably larger groups of people, that if we've seen anything that they've done relatively successfully, that we've been able to adapt or were thinking about maybe?
We went and visited Clarion and Eagle Grove last year to see, because they're more, I don't know, a few steps ahead of us. And we have plans to eventually go to Storm Lake. We're not quite that big yet, but we've taken some of their, you know, even teaching strategies with the newcomers, which has helped.
Right.
Yeah.
And we now have them as contacts too, so if we do have questions, we know who to ask.
Yeah.
Mr. Wee from Storm Lake is helping us a lot with some of our bigger system things as we kind of approach this conversation. Tell me from Storm Lake, he's a great resource.
Sure, they've been doing that for, yeah, great.
This, we'll let these guys go, but one year before this graphic that they put up here, 1920, we had, we had a .5 ELL teacher, and, you know, our numbers have changed, obviously, but the support we have changes. You know, we are supporting these children much better than what we were, and we actually have one more step to go. You know, we need to put a middle-level person in place, just scheduling more than anything, so that we're not missing this group that operates in a different building, different schedule, and so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your efforts. Thank you.
Extremely beneficial for our district to make it a priority to serve those students that we maybe haven't in the past.
In our community.
I think there's a big, yeah, big contingency that we don't realize.
We talked a lot, we don't want to be responsive to this. We want to be before that. We want to, we want to help these kids assimilate, you know, be part of Algonquin High School, Algonquin Community Schools, and those two gals are awesome, and they do a really good job of making those kids feel comfortable, and they are, I really do feel they are comfortable in our school.
That's great. Do we need to, I like the headphones idea. Do we need to ever look at maybe an interpreter in the district that, you know, and that could be as we get more students too?
For sure.
Have like in the elementary, I'm thinking.
A couple of years ago, we had, we had someone hired. Would love to hire that person if they're out there. I think that's the challenge right now, is hiring people with those skills, because there's just not many of those out there. We have a couple of community resources that we utilize to help us with parent-teacher conferences. We'll call some of those things. Hormel is really, works with us. They have, they have that person that works for them. That person will come here and help out with elementary parent-teacher conferences, help Morgan with parent-teacher conferences. We have a couple of other contacts in the community who do some of that same work for us. But yeah, we could certainly use an interpreter in-house, and that's always.
Can our fourth-year Spanish kids serve in any of those capacity or no?
They would say no way. They aren't fluent, and that's the thing, you know, those gals who don't have a Spanish-speaking background can interpret sometimes better than, because they know the kids and they know the families and they know what they need, and they do a really good job, but that process of interpreting, you're going to be pretty fluent to do that effectively.
Immerse yourself in it. Like they say, the dialect is just.
It's different, right?
Different enough.
Yep.
For sure.
All right, we'll go back to the superintendent's report.
All right, so what we're going to do tonight is I'm going to go through the certified budget as we will next month as well. Tonight, I go through it with the purpose of, so if we have questions, we can ask those, if we have concerns, we can resolve those before we get to the certified budget in April. So, the, a couple of things here. You know, what the certified budget is, you know, it's a document that it's going to show the taxes that are levied for each fund, you know, for the general fund, for example, for the management fund, for example. And then it's also going to show expenditures. You know, how much money are we going to spend in five different? how much money are we going to spend in five different instructional categories that we'll, we'll get to. Now, I, I will talk to you guys much more, much deeper than that. I'll get a lot more specific, but really it's just those two things that is part of the certified budget process. The certified budget and that report is certified by April 15th. That's the deadline in the state. This year, it's actual, actually April 30th because you've maybe heard in the news, there was a rollback error on taxes in the state and that just got resolved today. We just got a final email that all of that is resolved. So they, they're giving us a little more time, but we'll still be done before the 15th. Our meeting, I think, is on the 10th. So we'll be, we'll certify ours, ours is April 11th right after our meeting. What we, what we certify next month, just two things. The maximum that we can spend next year and then also what our total tax rate is. Those are the two things that we certify. I'm gonna talk to you about a lot more than that and part of the process is informing our people of more than that, but those are the two things that we actually certify next month. There's five, all of our expenditures are put into five categories. Instruction, total support, non-instruction, total other, and total expenditures. That is, we certify them like that, even though we'll talk about expenditures more specific than that. Those are the five categories that they, they fall into. So when we amend our budget, which we'll do next month, we don't, do we need to? We don't know yet. We usually do that in April as well. We amend it in a certain category and that'll come up in our audit later tonight that when we amended in one of the categories, last year we didn't amend enough. So our property tax rate is certified as a total rate per thousand of taxable valuation. So, you know, if you have a hundred thousand dollar house, it's rolled back to 52% of that value is then taxed at $10.62 per thousand. That's what our tax rate is for us. So that, that's how our, that's how we report it. That's how we certify it. It's not so much per management and so much for general fund. It's the total of $10.62 per thousand. That was our tax rate last year. Also, part of this process is we inform the public of what we actually spent in FY '22, which is last year. We also inform the public of what we're planning to spend this year, which ends June 30th. And then we also inform the public of what we expect to spend next year. So there's, there's three different years in there. This is what we really spent '22. This is what we plan on spending this year and then what our plan is for the following. That's not anything we certify. It's just what we inform people of and we put in the publications and the paper and so on. So when we, we talk about funding, you know, there's variables that impact that. You guys know that. We're gonna talk about some of those key variables. Also, part of the process this year, everything looks different this year than what it normally does and that's because of the reorganization. Typically, when we look at these variables, you know, they're gonna change a small amount, you know. When we look at the money amounts, they're gonna change two, three percent, for example. Enrollment's gonna, you know, we hope go up just a little bit. It might even go down. This year, they all change because all of the Laverne students are gonna be counted in our enrollment. So keep in mind, that includes sixth through 12th graders who were already whole grade shared here. Okay, they've already been going to school here. They weren't counted in our headcount enrollment though. So all those kids, any student who's open enrolled in from Laverne, those kids, plus all those kids who are in the Laverne building, those are all impacted. So our headcount enrollment is gonna change significantly and I'll show you that here in a second. When we look at enrollment, it's those kids we're talking about, but it's not just that. It's also, there's waitings such as a special education student's gonna have waitings on top of their 1.0 to give them additional waitings. There's waitings we get for English language learners, which gives us additional funds, not near enough, but additional funds as well. There's waitings for sharing. You know, we share our transportation directors. So we get a certain number of students added on to do that. And we also have reorganization incentives, which is a hundred and some number of kids. It's your certified enrollment times 1.0 minus your special ed kids. Those are all you get put into as students, okay? So it's not just our number of kids, not just our headcount. Then you gotta add on all those supplementary waitings and I'll go through that with you. Preschool is also part of that, but preschool doesn't, isn't a 1.0. Every preschool child is a .5 in, in funding.
Was there talk of increasing that?
There is and there, and there has been for quite a while.
Still active or is it?
No, I don't think it's active right now. I don't think it made the last funnel. It would be a really good thing, you know. More funding for your preschool, more kids in preschool, more kids prepared for school, you know, to sum up the value of that. And it's something I think will happen. We just gotta get to that, get to that point. So our enrollment, looking at the numbers here, again, drastic increase, right? 11%. 1299 to 1446. Now I'll tell you, we aren't gonna have 150 more kids in our school building next year than this year. Not, not by any means. It's gonna be probably more like, you know, 25-ish, something around that. But how it's certified and our certified number is gonna grow 150. Now remember when I, we discussed enrollment, I think in November, certified enrollment's gonna go up. We know that. Open enrollment's gonna go down, right? Whole grade share's gonna go down. So there's other numbers that are gonna go down. So where we get our money is gonna be different, but the money in the end will be the same. Our special ed waitings, again, we're taking special ed waitings that, you know, we're, we're at Laverne, you know, and now they're, they're gonna be here. Again, not just those 25 kids, but also all the whole grade shared kids. So special ed waitings go up 13.8% as well. Supplemental waitings, again, 120, you know, this is, this is the reorganization number for the most part. Where we have .10 times our certified number, well, now we have .10 times that 1466 rather than 1299. So our supplemental waiting goes up 21% next year. Total weighted enrollment, again, drastically different, okay? But again, it won't, it won't be more students, you know, than, than what we have. We won't have 200 more students, you know, like that shows. But total weighted enrollment, which is used in your certified budget and how you get your funding, will go up. Preschool enrollment, well, there's a normal one. You know, it, it goes down. We have two less preschoolers this year than last year. Laverne didn't have any preschool students this year. They had one who came to school here. So that, that number is, it's more normal and it actually goes down four kids, two on here, cause they're, they're only funded as half.
Is that the actual number or is that the, of kids or is that the weighted?
That's the weighted number.
So there's really 110 actual kids?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So you, you take all of those, those certified numbers, you know, our headcount enrollment plus our supplemental numbers, which includes special ed, you add all those up, that gives you a spending authority, which includes all of these sources. So regular program district cost, that's the per pupil amount, we'll call it 7,600 times the number of kids. That's RPDC. Then you add in budget guarantee. If you have a decline in enrollment, which we don't have, so we don't have that. But if you did, it would be 101% of your funding from the last year. So you would add that in. Plus your supplementary weighting district costs. So that 102, for example, was what ours was last year. You add that in. Plus your special ed district costs, the additional weights from special ed, plus the teacher's salary supplement, which is a per pupil amount that we, it was put in place so that the starting teaching wage in Iowa went up. Okay, this happened about 15 years ago or so. If you have it there, then you disperse it to your, your people. In our district, it's dispersed evenly to all of our, all of our staff because our starting wage is higher than the minimum. Then there's PD cost, you know, professional development money that we get, that's a per pupil amount. What we get is based on how many kids we have. Early intervention for literacy, for example. Again, that's a per pupil amount. Teacher leadership and compensation, our instructional coaches, our, our leads, all those different things that Mrs. Eichen oversees that program. Those, that is funded in a per pupil amount. AEA district cost, which is simply in and out, plus the dropout prevention. All that together equals our combined district cost. Our regular program district cost went up 14%, okay? Supplementary weighting went up 23%. Now we're talking about dollars here. Special education cost went up 287,016%. Teacher salary supplement goes up 14%, 138,000. Professional development goes up 14,000, 12 and a half percent. Early intervention, 6,000. Teacher leadership and compensation goes up 68,000, which is 12.8%. So our combined district cost goes up 15,000, 3.4%. That's the dropout prevention, I should say, goes up 15,000. Our combined district cost goes up a little over $2 million, 2.4 million for a total 14.6%. Now, are we simply getting $2 million, 2.4 more million than what we would've gotten? We aren't because we would've got a lot of those dollars other ways, such as whole grade sharing agreements, open enrollment in agreements and so on. So it's not just that we're getting 2.4 million dollars more, cause we aren't. Just looking at it through this lens rather than another one, it's 2.4 million more than it would've been last year.
It's basically just a shift in accounting.
It is, it is. Now, how does the, our tax rate figure into all those numbers? Well, our tax rate's gotta, gotta generate those dollars, right? So that, that's, that's how it all fits together. So the, the funding per student, we'll call it 7,600, that's funded two different ways. It's funded by our local property taxes and then the rest is by the state aid, okay? That comes, comes from, from the state. Now that bucket of money is, is, it's got a top on it. So in our community, we are a very property-rich district. So our property valuations generate a lot of dollars. That means we get less state aid. If you were in a property poor district, you would generate more dollars and you would get more state aid. The, the end amount is the same. Who's paying for the kids' education is different. And that's just part of the funding formula that was created a number of years ago in the state, state of Iowa. So this is what makes up the general fund part of our tax rate, okay? There's the uniform levy. We're gonna talk about that way more tonight than normal. Every district in the state has a uniform levy of $5.40 per thousand, okay? Everyone's is the same. That's why it's called the uniform levy. Our uniform levy next year is gonna generate more dollars than it did this year, but the rate's gonna go down because it's not gonna be uniform for us for three years. I'll explain that. On top of that, when I talk about that bucket, you know, money we, we produce in our property, money we get from the state, there's 12 and a half percent left. Now they, it only funds to 87 and a half percent. The other 12 and a half percent's funded through the additional levy, which is then a property tax. Again, we are able to have an additional levy that's lower than some because we have high property valuations. Also, this year, we were adding in property. We're adding in the former Laverne district. So that generates more dollars. We have more $5.40, $5.40 out there than what we did previously. So it generates more. That's a good thing, cause it's gonna make everyone's taxes go down as a result. The uniform levy, we don't have control over. The additional levy, we don't have control over. The instructional support levy, which we have, is added into that general fund property tax. Cash reserve, there's two cash reserve levies. As long as our fund balance is less than 20%, which ours is, but it might not be in, in a year or two, that equals your total general fund levy. So this is where it gets, it gets interesting. This is, she's tired of hearing me talk about it because I, I think it is really interesting. So our, our uniform levy is going to produce 977,000 more dollars next year than it did this year and it's gonna go down 50 cents. And again, the reason our uniform levy goes down is when we bring a new district in, Laverne's tax rate is lower than ours. So rather than moving it all the way up at once, they, the state will lower their uniform ready levy to $4.40 per thousand, okay? Whatever that saves, which is $225,000, our district also gets and they take that off the uniform levy. So our uniform levy next year will not be 500 or $5.40, it'll be $4.90. So it'll be, we're the only state, only district in the state that will have that, you know, for next year, a non $5.40 because of, because of reorganization. So it's going down 50 cents per thousand, but increasing almost a million dollars more in revenue. That's how, that's more valuations we have next year. That's a good thing. Taxes, taxes are going down 50 cents on the uniform levy. Now that's a stair step. The next year, they'll move it up 50 cents. Ours will go up because the savings will be a little bit less. It won't go all the way to 5.40 and then the third year, it'll get back to 5.40. So they're gonna go down next year and then they'll go up a little bit more and then a little bit more the following. So our additional levy, that last 12 and a half percent that we have to fund through property taxes, we're gonna, our, we will produce 379,000 more than this year, but our additional levy's actually going down 20 cents from, from last year. So there's 70 cents tax savings right there between those two, but producing more dollars. That's a good thing. That's a really good thing for our people. Cash reserve, these, these are a little more simple. You know, these are dollars we put in place to cover our special ed debt, stuff like that. Was 600,000, it increases 195,000 for next year. Our cash reserve general goes down $4,100. So our total cash reserve goes up to, what is it? 800, 795,000, I believe is what that is. 795.9 is what our total cash reserve next year.
That's the two combined, SBRC and other?
That's the two combined.
Total of 795?
Yep, it'd be 600 and 195.9 are the two numbers. So then, that's our-
Can you tell me how that compares this year for numbers?
That is up slightly from this year and our special ed debt is up slightly as well. So those numbers all equal our general fund levy, okay? There are levies outside the general fund. General fund's how we pay for teachers, how we pay for salaries, how we pay for benefits. There's other levies that we use to pay for things like, like buildings and equipment, technology. Those are outside of the general fund. Management fund, how we pay for all of our insurance, property insurance in the district, how we pay for our early retirees. Pebble is how we pay for buildings, buses, technology. We don't have a Pearl. Activities not a tax. Capital projects, again, isn't a, isn't a proper tax. That would be through sales tax, but it's a per pupil amount. Debt service, the people in the former Laverne don't have debt service. The people in the former Algona don't have debt service. The people in the former Taitaka do have debt service in their levy. To add to the confusion there, there's three, three separate groups. We'll have three separate tax rates in our, in our district next year for our people.
And how much longer does that go on in Taitaka?
2028.
28, I think, yeah?
27, 28, somewhere in there. And then that will be paid for and then they'll be the same, same as us. The former Laverne will be different than us for three years and then will be the same as us. The certified budget expenditures and total property tax rate, those are the two things that we, we approve next, next month. So it looks like this. For FY '24, next year, instruction will go to 18 million. Total support services, 7.1. Non-instructional, a little over a million. Total other expenditures, 4.2. This is what we reestimate this fiscal year too. 17.3, 7.6, same, and 4.41. This is what we actually spent in FY '22. 17.1, 7.3, 8.64, and 4.2. This budget for FY '24 comes with a proposed property tax rate of 9.85. We were 10.62 this year.
So that's a little over a 7% decrease if we're talking.
Yep.
And that's for the, okay, saying the three districts here. So that's for the Algona district.
That is the Algona. I can get your, some other ones in, I think, the next page, two pages. So this is a comparison- So this is a comparison of those fund tax rates over the last seven years. So two thousand and twenty-four, we get to nine eighty-five. You'll see that the difference is, it's right here. The general fund is a, is almost, it's ninety-eight cents less. That's because of the uniform levy and the additional levy. Both are going down next year.
So we're proposing, pretty much are taking the full down, knowing that next year-
It'll have to-
It'll go back up, and then the following year, it'll go back up again, because we won't have that reorganization up, right?
There is a button to it.
It doesn't have to.
Doesn't have.
This, this, this levy will go up, but maybe, maybe cash reserve will not.
Right, and a property value, we don't know, you know how much property valuations went up, adding Laverne into the formula? And valuations go every two years, so valuations keep increasing, the rate can decrease.
Yeah. We're, we're in a really good, really good place.
So we're in a good situation. Even if this uniform levy goes from four, I don't know if the number's four seventy, to five forty over three years, it doesn't necessarily mean tax rates increase, because valuations can increase, this should reduce the tax rate per thousand.
Yeah. That, that additional levy, without a doubt, is gonna continue to decrease, because we're, we're gonna generate so many more dollars from it. It's a little bit different in, with the uniform, because really, all that happens then is the good people of Algonah pay more, and then the state pays less on that one. That, that's, that's the harder one there.
Why is our management fund going up, Joe?
That, I'm glad you said that, because I didn't, I didn't get to that. We're, we're up slightly, about eight cents from last year, to prepare for our retirement program.
We're just moving money from cash?
Moving money to the management, so that we can put a retirement program in place, which is gonna reduce the general fund expenditures. This is looking out through two thousand and twenty-eight. We know by two thousand and twenty-eight, we have to make an adjustment in our expenditures. We, we've talked about that. This is putting some of those dollars in place to make that adjustment.
Okay.
So we're-
Planning for the future.
It is planning for the future, there's no doubt about it. We have, we've done a lot of the work that will start to, you know, as part of our summer retreat, you talk about what we wanna do as a board with a retirement program in the future. I can show you, you know, our plan and where that, the dollars that are saved, and how that changes our, our forecast from twenty-eight and beyond.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So then, next month, we'll see the numbers for exactly fiscal, no, not fiscal, dollar numbers for management, PEPAL, debt centers, etc.
Yeah, they, they were, they were in there, like, in what they're producing. I could blow them.
I can't see it.
Yeah, it, it was in our, our graphs, too.
Yeah, it's in there, I just can't read it.
You know, some cash reserve, um-
Well, the PEPAL, what it generates, the-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the debt.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is in here, but it's, it's-
It's on there.
This isn't really for us to read. This is to show you, this is what we approve. You guys have probably seen this in the newspaper. This is the actual publication that has the, the Laverne rate of nine dollars and twenty cents, the former Algonah rate of nine eighty-five. Actually, I'm wrong here, Gloria. I, I can get that for you. This, uh, this sheet right here is produced from the online application that we create. We're the only district in the state that has three of these, and they, their programmers can't figure out how to get that third one on there yet. So I have it, it's just not coming out on the sheet that it produces yet, but they've told us they have it ready for us, so. And I can get that tonight, Gloria, too, because it's, it's on our, it's in our program. It just doesn't print on the sheet. Okay, so, last couple things here, and we, we spend more time on this tonight, so that we can, we can answer questions that comes up. It makes our process in, in April a lot easier. The three things that will, that are important in this sheet, the tax rate, nine eighty-five, our public hearing, April tenth, at seven PM, which we've done all that, there's nothing to actually do tonight. This is just a little bit about the deadlines, really for, for Lisa and I, not for you guys, but we'll, we have to put the budget in the paper ten to twenty days before the budget hearing. We have to have it adopted prior to April thirtieth. We'll have ours adopted April tenth. If we needed to put an instructional levy or a PEPAL in place, you have to before April fifteenth. We already did that, we did it in September. We don't have a budget guarantee. We have to send it to the county April thirtieth, we'll have it sent on April eleventh. And then if there's any budgets to the, should be FY twenty, twenty-three, no later than May thirty-first. Or FY twenty-
You're right, no, you're right.
Twenty-three. So this is a screen for next time, so I don't forget, but it's the same. So there is, you know, there's nothing, there's no action tonight. There's, that's just information for you guys, and it's a lot. I gave it to you in paper form also, so that if there's anything, questions that come up, and this is where we have it right now, we feel good about that, and nine eighty-five will be the tax rate that we, we recommend and certify next month. If there's a change we need to make, we'll dig back in and do that.
Could you put on your-
Sounds good.
Process for next month? You'll also bring the current valuation, the proposed valuations, the combined districts, so we have an idea what we are?
Yep.
Joe, anything else in your report? This was a very good overview. I mean, it's difficult when we've got three districts, you know, we're working with districts, each different tax rate, so. All right.
No, I, nothing else.
All right, no problem.
That, a lot of stuff there. Again, if you have questions that come up, let me know, we'll get them answered. You got a plan to move, that tax rate looks great, right?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Creates the money we need to continue to program as we are, and that's always what we're, what we're trying to do if we can.
All right, we'll move into the new business end, and we'll start with the seven hundred series, the second reading. We'll be approving these tonight if possible.
Yep, second reading of the seven hundred series, all of those are in there, so I'm just gonna highlight the, the changes. It starts with seven oh four three. There's a small addition based on IASB recommendations for investments. The second change is in seven oh four five and student activities. We removed a paragraph that I should, I put on there, because it's not part of the IASB recommendation, nor does it align with current practices of where they would bring a written plan of what they do if they finish in the hole. We wouldn't let, let it get to that, that point anyway. Seven oh five one, purchasing and bidding, an additional paragraph added for spending federal child nutrition funds, removal of some dates and deadlines for procurement. Those are both IASB recommendations to make those changes. There's also a public improvement section in seven oh five one that is required by Iowa law that we don't have that needs to be added. So that's the change to seven oh five one. Seven oh five three, regulation number one, payment for goods and services. This would be an additional regulation to seven oh five three that we don't have, that provides Lisa the authority to, to pay certain bills. This is an auditor-friendly regulation. You know, ours was really general, it said that she could. This specifically says that she can pay it in those areas, which our auditor wants to, wants to see it that way. Seven oh five four, expenditures for a public purpose. It's a policy, again, that we currently don't have. The policy involves the use of public funds. I, I think it shows a greater transparency to, to our people to ensure public funds are used and best serve public purpose. The regulation number one for that, the use of the public funds, to validate school purchases, auditors will, they always wanna look at our policy. You know, they look at our expenditures, how we spend public funds, what's your policy say you can do? So this is putting policy in place that, you know, is, is best practice to allow, you know, flexibility for culture-building purchases, recruitment of personnel, promotes improvement and staff, staff morale, cooperation, you know? Whether it's buying shirts for, for new staff members, or, or food for celebrations, or anything in between, this gives us the, in policy, it says we can do it, which is, that's what, that's what we want. We wanna be transparent, that that is how we're using it, and put it in policy that that's, that's okay for us to do it that way. Regulation two, again, public purpose dollars in activity funds. This is a regulation to have all public purpose expenditures within the student activity fund to be pre-approved by the activities director. Also provides some specifics for these expenditures, which are, are good for students. And then the last one, seven oh seven two, in the treasurer's annual, annual report, we strike out the term "schoolhouse fund." That's an old term, probably back to the, I don't know, how, how long time, seventies or eighties, probably.
It takes a long time.
And, and replace it with all other funds, which is the term that we would use. So those are the changes to seven hundred, good, good changes, some just that we need to change to update policy and to be more transparent in our use of public funds.
All right, any questions or discussion?
Thank you for the update of the policy changes.
Thank you very much, yes. All right, then, if we hear none, I need a motion then for approval.
I do a motion to approve the seven hundred series, second reading.
Thanks, Tom. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Glad we have a motion and a second. Need just further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Open enrollment.
So we've had one student who has requested to open enroll out of the district. This student does fulfill all requirements for the application, and I recommend the approval.
So moved.
Thanks, Jay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Open enrollment approved. We have a middle school and high school track fundraiser.
Both the no school and the high school track team will be selling McDonald's value cards with an anticipated earning of around four thousand dollars to be used for uniforms equipment and their, their daily u- usage. I recommend the approval of this fundraiser.
All right. Need a motion then to approve the fundraiser.
So moved.
Thank you, Todd. Do we have a second? Thanks, Andrea. Or, sorry, Gloria. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Name, scoreboard naming agreement.
The Hoover family, in honor of Janice Hoover, has provided twenty thousand dollars in a donation towards a new baseball scoreboard. The memorial scoreboard will have signage in memory of Mrs. Hoover and Brian Hoover's business for the lifetime of the scoreboard. So I recommend the approval of that agreement to do that.
So is the board already ordered, or, I mean, up, or we order after?
Yes, yeah.
Plan to be up by baseball season, or is it?
I don't know if it'll be at the beginning, but-
But it'll be there.
Yeah.
How does this compare to, like, I know on the football scoreboard, we have advertisements and stuff. Dollars-wise, is it comparable? Are, are those lifetime ones at the football field?
Football are not lifetime. The dollars are, are less than, than what the Hoover family is giving. And that's kinda what we use as our gauge, is what we've done for others. And also, the amount in percentage of the board, you know, the amount for that signage in comparison to the cost of that total board, you know, this is a hundred percent of this board.
With the football field board, private cost considerably more.
Considerably more.
Yeah, gotcha, that makes sense.
Ten times.
So, if I understand, Joe, you're saying that basically the cost of the board is about, what?
Twenty thousand.
They're covering the entire cost of it. Okay, got it.
I'd like to thank the Hoover family for their gift.
Yes.
Absolutely. I make a motion to approve the agreement.
Thank you, Andrea. Do we have a second?
So, I'll second it.
All right, thanks, Jay. Any further discussion then? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved for the scoreboard naming agreement. All right, and recently got our audit reads. Well, we got that last week, last month.
Yeah, Lisa distributed the FY twenty-two audit summaries to you guys last, last month. I'm gonna try to summarize those fifty-seven pages the easiest way I can. Overall, the, the audit looks very, very good. The financial statements were prepared in accordance with accounting principles. A material weakness in internal control over financial reporting was disclosed, and that, that's typically in there. The internal control part is something that we always will have issues with. Segregation of duties is something that we will always have issues with. There are no non-compliance on any of our financial statements. The material weakness in internal control over major programs was disclosed, so like, like we said. The second part, the findings related to the financial statements, no issues of non-compliance. Segregation of duties, we do not properly segregate payroll and journal entries. However, we have made some changes in that. I don't know if that will take away that finding or not, but we have-
He did say, I told him all the changes we've made. He said, it's like we're making steps to improve this.
Yeah.
So we'll see.
The last part, the other findings related to the required statutory reporting. In our certified budget, our expenditures for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two exceeded the amended certified budget amount. And it was just, remember, there were those, those five areas, and one of those areas, our amended amount was, didn't cover what we spent. So we, we have to be careful and make sure that when we amend it, we amend it to the right amount. Second, no expenditures do not meet the requirement for public purpose. So we just did a lot in our policy to make sure public purpose is correct, but there was nothing in there that he found incorrect. We're just, we're just trying to be open and transparent about what we're doing. Third, no expenditures of district money for travel expenses of spouses of district officials or employees. That's good. I don't know why that's a required thing they report out on, but it is. Fourth, business transactions between the district and district officials or employees were noted, and that would be with Jackso K Tire and Rodney Davis as a scorekeeper, but neither represent a conflict of interest. Certified enrollment was understated by one point four five, so we'll, we'll get more. Our audit adjustment is positive. There's, typically, we have an audit adjustment in enrollment, you know, we counted kids who weren't here, or in this case, vice versa. There's no variances in our supplementary weighting, we had that right. No instances of non-compliance on deposits or investments. The certified annual, annual report was certified timely, and there's no instances of categorical funding being used to supplant rather than supplement other funds. So, the audit looks very, very good. Lisa and, you know, our, our new structure, they, they work hard to make sure that it is, and things look good. We have some of those internal control things that are always gonna be there, some of the segregation of duties things are, although we have made changes to make those better, we think. So the audit looks very good.
Well done, nice job, Lisa.
Yeah, see, we probably don't say it, thank, thank you enough. We see the reports, but we, we know all the work that goes in to get to those reports, so we really appreciate all, everybody's effort. So, all right. We need a motion then to approve the FY twenty-two audit.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Jay. Do we have a second?
Second to motion.
Thanks, Tom. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we need to look at some resignations and-
We have four resignations. We had a fourth one added late. Kim Olden Camp, Bryant Elementary Teacher Associate, Krista Valetta from the Food Service, Crystal Minaj from Food Service, and Bailey Connors from High School Vocal Music. Mr. Connors is going back to his hometown.
Yeah, so I talked to Joe the other day, and I don't know if anybody else was able to make it to the, the vocal concert here a week or two ago, between the middle school and high school. Best concert I've ever been to. So, hate to see Mr. Connors go.
Hate to see Mr. Connors go. He's done an awesome job. He's a, he's a really good young educator. I'm wishing the best. What he's doing.
Yep. All right, need a motion then to approve the resignations.
Make a motion to approve the resignation.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second? Thanks, Gloria. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New contracts, just one, or did?
Uh, we got a couple that got added late. Travis Burkey, middle school baseball coach, Shane Meshke as volunteer middle school baseball coach, Nick Leebel, instrumental music, summer band lessons. So, that's this summer. Typically, our, what we approved for Nick in the other meeting was next summer, but we didn't, we didn't have that plan done yet for this year, and he's able to do that. So, Mr. Leebel will be back to provide summer band lessons this summer.
All right. Need a motion then to approve new contracts.
So moved.
Thank you. Todd, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea. We have a motion and a second for new contracts. Any further discussion?
Mr. Burkey, he resigned from softball. Did we have that filled and everything? Do we have, we have that? Okay.
Our freshman coach moved up to JV, and we hired a new freshman coach.
Okay, good.
Good discussion. All right, we have a motion and a second then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? New contracts accepted. All right, at this time, then, we'll go into closed session under twenty-one-point-five, one aye for the performance review of the superintendent. Need a roll call vote to go into closed session. Oh, yeah, make a motion to go into closed session first.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.